Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, April 15th, meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners and all the meeting board. Please stand for the flag. I'm not going to get into tonight. We have a motion to approve.
Second. Aye.
Item goes past by the county council. Five sixteen twenty-five, seventeen twenty-five, eighteen twenty-five, nineteen twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, and twenty-one twenty-five. Oh.
Hello, hello, hello. Well, well.
While we're waiting, I asked Mr. McManus, there was one other person that signed up on that. That sign-up sheet. Wish to make public comment? Sign up? Other sign-ups? Wish to speak to on an agenda item? Hello. Hello.
Hello, hello. Hello.
One, two, three.
Hello, hello, hello. Hello.
Calling all cars.
Citizens arrest. Citizens.
Welcome, everybody. Oh, that's better. Good. And the crackling has stopped, so. Okay, apologize for that delay. As was pointed out, the microphones weren't working, and we were talking about the, or listing the bills that were passed by the county council last week. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one dash twenty-five. If there are no objections or comments about any of them, accept a motion to approve those bills passed by the county council last week.
Motion to approve the bills passed by the county council fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one twenty-five.
Second. Thank you.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmire?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, approval of Resolution R-six dash C dash twenty twenty-five. Ownership transfer of property at five six one twenty Larison Boulevard.
Good evening, Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director with offices on the eleventh floor, part of the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Before you today is Resolution R-six dash C dash twenty twenty-five. This would be a resolution transferring property that the Board of Commissioners owns at five six one two zero Larison Boulevard and transferring that property to the Redevelopment Commission. Earlier today, at the Redevelopment Commission's regular meeting, the Redevelopment Commission accepted a transfer of this property subject to your approval of this resolution tonight. This is property that will be used for industrial purposes. It's located on the southeast corner of Larison and Fillmore in the IEC. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I was going to ask you to restate, but you already said it is in the IEC, so it's not a parcel outside of those boundaries?
Correct.
And it's going to be used for industrial use?
Yep.
Southeast cor- southeast corner of Larison and Fillmore, did you?
Fillmore, yes. Sure.
Gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Shalio regarding this? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R-seven dash C dash twenty twenty-five?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmire?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last item under the commissioners is ratification of employee medical benefit plan amendments. Phil, are you going to speak about, oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
We speak.
T, D.
You know, because your door is always open. I am s- I apologize. It's been a long day. It is important.
Good evening, Commissioners Al Cursets and Jim Lopez, St. Joe County EMA with offices at one twenty-five South Lafayette Street, across the street where the door is always open and you're always welcome.
Just for the record, we're looking for an approval of Resolution R-seven dash C dash twenty twenty-five, the countywide emergency declaration.
Yes. And this may seem a little like why now, but this is from the state of Indiana, Governor Brown's office, Indiana Department of Homeland Security. This is concerning all the storms, tornadoes that hit Indiana, beginning on March thirtieth. So this is a declaration of a disaster based on the damage we had. What this, the intent of this is the state is looking to get PA public assistance funds, possibly from FEMA, if we meet a state threshold. So it's across the whole region of counties that do this declaration, and we can put into it. We're having great cooperation. City of Mitchell-Waca, St. Joe County has been fantastic. Just got word from South Bend, they're on board. And this would allow for reimbursement on the public side to like our road crews, municipal workers that were out there cutting and freeing up the roads and doing all that work for fuel costs and everything, even emergency response and stuff like that. The threshold for the state is, I believe, thirteen? Thirteen million dollars they gotta hit. Now, again, this doesn't damage to structures, that's what they call IA, individual assist. This is PA, public assistance to the municipalities and governmental entities that responded to the disaster. Commissioner Morton was in attendance Friday, the state sent up some last Friday, and did that. And I want to thank Phil and Melissa for this declaration. We got this from the state, and if we pass this, this will allow us, as we collect this data, give it to the state, and then they package it together, and hopefully we'll get a return on our effort here. Any questions?
First of all, I'd like to sincerely thank you and you and Mr. Lopez for putting on that meeting Friday. I was blown away, to say the least. And the reason why I say that is, to me, it seems like the amount of data that you guys have to collect is next to impossible. But, you know, just by talking to both of you, and I had some questions, you know, that I said, how are you gonna do this? And you guys seemed like, hey, another day at the office. So, I mean, that, I'm serious. I was like blown away, so thank you.
Yeah.
I mean that sincerely, you know. I was glad I was there because it was a learning experience for me. I mean, I know you guys do a lot and go through a lot, but the presentation from the young ladies that were there?
Yeah.
Was excellent, and you guys' response was better than that. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that. It is mind-boggling, and, but, you know, we just keep at it. We've had a lot of cooperation. It's really important that the governmental entities work with us. We'll feed them the information, and we're gonna, the state's gonna do a hot wash when this is all over to make it better. They have a new IDHS director, Director, I think, Morgan, she's former military, very squared away, and they just want to improve it. I think the state knows they can improve some stuff on their two-on-one portal, what we had created. Jim and Bev Kingston created a, like a portal on our county website to also report information. So there's things we can do to make.
Well, that's, those are the things I'm referring to.
Yeah.
Okay? And I just, I can't say enough about, you know, you, this effort that you're doing. I guess my question becomes, what's the timeline? Because this is, this data collection seems almost, you know.
Yeah, we, we want to have this done by next week. It's a thirty-day window we have on this.
That's what I was asking, okay.
Yeah, we might have to hustle in, some state people might have to come up and do a review, but they just said, get it done, get it in. They'll review it, then FEMA reviews it, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay, thank you again.
And we're still working some other angles, though, trying to meet the total, what they call, damage to private residents classified two ways, minor and major. And what a lot of people will think is major is minor by FEMA's standard. Major is like a heavy tree through the roof of your house, smashing through the trusses and punching a hole through the ceiling and water damage coming in. That's considered major, and we're, we have to meet a threshold of that to try to get individual assistance, or we're trying to get those SBA loans. It's gonna be close. We're hustling, we're working, we're doing some field work tomorrow again, and we're just gonna, we're gonna go for it, you know? So see what happens.
That's off to you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and by the way, once this is approved and we get it signed and the auditor has to sign it, this will go down to the state and it gets put on what they call Web EOC, Sir Emergency Operations Center, that it has been declared. They keep a list of all the counties that have done that.
I have one question. Sure, please. So by us passing this, it doesn't just include St. Joe County government body, it gives every municipality in St. Joe County the ability to file for?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they like it, we gave them the data or the information and stuff, they, they fill it out and then come back to us, because we don't know how many dump trucks Sky had out and stuff. But Sky's crew did a great job, Charlie Farrell and the rest of the people working. As you know, they worked hard, too. All, all the municipalities did. And the return, if it does come, is supposed to be seventy-five cents on the dollar. But again, we don't know if it'll come or not.
Thank you for doing this work. I know you guys were out that night. You called me the next morning, we're already working, looking for houses with damage and that, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Tree across the street came down and blocked the intersection, and Sky's crew was out there quickly to open up the intersection. Surprisingly, two years ago, there, a tree in the backyard came down and missed the house but took out the garage on a beautiful, clear day. At least this one was a little more understandable, but could have been a major property damage had it gone the other directions.
Yeah. Well, one, one last thing storm-related. That event we had on the thirtieth, there were no tornadoes as determined by National Weather Service going out, but we had wind shear, those wind shear coming down, downdraft winds, seventy-five to ninety estimated. The only confirmed we've got is eighty-two. Valpo had eighty-seven. And we're gonna look, we're talking with National Weather Service, perhaps after our upgrade of our sirens is done, that they're just not tornado-activated on these wind shear events. Their radar's getting better to, to see it that, yeah, we're gonna have to alert you if that wind shear's coming, because that's just as danger. The funnel, the rotation is more dangerous. It literally explodes. But a wind shear, we saw what the damage it can do, and it can kill somebody if you're in the wrong place of your house.
I think that's a great move.
It's, it's a extremely great move, and I'm saying that based upon the calls and the comments that I received, wait a minute, you know, and the newspaper article and, you know, whatever. So, no, I think that's a fantastic move, because people don't understand the distinction that you just, you know?
Yeah.
Talked about, and.
People love their sirens, and we're proud of that.
Oh, without a doubt, you know? I mean, I had people telling me the next day, you can't tell me, Rafael, that wasn't a tornado.
It wasn't. We went down to Marshall County Bourbon to help out a little bit, and.
But it's, but it can be just as devastating.
Yes.
That was, that's what they're saying. That's what they're saying to me, you know?
Absolutely.
No, you're right. I don't, people didn't understand that you can't use the sirens, they should be here to save lives, and that was a storm that we should have.
Exactly.
Been able to get along.
Exactly.
Gentlemen, any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R-seven dash C dash twenty twenty-five?
Motion to approve. Second.
Did you get that recorded?
We have a motion by Mr. Hazen and a second by Commissioner Morton. Commissioner Morton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmire?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we will move on to ratification of employee medical benefit plan amendments.
So this is more of a housekeeping matter. These plan amendments have already been approved and signed by the commissioners. Unfortunately, through no fault of the commissioners, when they were handed over, they did not make it to our company that manages our plan. They have asked that they be re-signed uniquely because some of our commissioners were not commissioners at the time they were approved. In order to get them authorized to sign, we need to ratify them today. Once they're ratified, then they can be signed and sent over to have the amendments approved and finalized for the plan purposes.
This doesn't make any changes from what?
That's correct.
Self and other commissioners approved a couple of years ago.
Correct. The plan has been fulfilled pursuant to the amendments that are on these already.
With that, do we have a motion to ratify the employee medical benefit plan amendments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Baxmire?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I can see us starting to do rock, paper, scissors.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
Moving on to the JJC, approval of grant application to the Indiana Criminal Justice Juvenile Division Program for fiscal year, twenty fiscal years, twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven for reducing recidivism.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Cooper. I'm the controller at the Juvenile Justice Center. This is Stacy Poyner. She is the chief probation officer. We are here today to ask permission to apply for the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute Juvenile Diversion Grant Program, as you stated, for fiscal years twenty-five to twenty-seven. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer, and this is the first time we are applying for this grant.
I noted in the cover letter, we did not apply two years ago, so it's something we've applied for previously, but not two years ago.
As far as I'm aware, we have never applied for this.
Never applied.
Correct.
Okay.
Hmm. I, I guess my question becomes, why hasn't this, I mean, I know you can't speak for previous administrations, obviously, but that seems kind of.
Correct. Um, I do believe this is a new grant.
That it's never been, never been applied for.
Sorry, I can speak to that. I, I mean, I don't know why past administration has not applied for it. It was new grant two years ago. Why they didn't apply for it? I don't know.
Okay, you just, okay, you just answered it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So it just, it just became available two years ago?
Yes, just two years ago, yes.
Okay.
And then when I.
Because I was gonna say, wait a minute. Okay.
Right, yes. Then when I became chief in January, I was made aware of this, and I said, well, why aren't we applying for it? We need to.
Okay, thank you.
Can you give us, not only the commissioners, but those listening, kind of an overview of how this would work if, if we are successful in obtaining the grant?
Certainly, yes. The grant is for eighty thousand dollars over the course of the next two years. It would start from July this year, twenty twenty-five, and run through June, the end of June of twenty twenty-seven. It is not a reimbursement grant. We would get the money upfront. We would get forty thousand dollars for this fiscal year and then forty thousand dollars for the next fiscal year. And obviously, we would be reporting out all the numbers and everything, monthly, quarterly, to the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. It's a grant that we're utilizing, we're trying to utilize the funds for a program that's already been in place, Five Star Life Lift. I don't know if anybody's familiar with Five Star Program, but they have been working with our diversion youth for the last three years. It was a contract that was previously signed with the county, but this way, we're trying to get these funds through the grant rather than asking the county for that money to fund the program. They've been very successful with the youth that they've been working with, reducing recidivism. It is a diversion program, so they are low-risk youth that they're working with, youth who are skipping school, habitually driven youth, youth who are running away from home, youth who are, just have ungovernable behaviors in the home, those behaviors that parents are struggling to control, in some very minor delinquent actions, possibly a domestic battery, where a parent and youth are willing to come together and work through their issues through this diversion program. But we've been very successful working with Five Star Life, and we're really hopeful to keep this going with our, our low-risk youth.
So, okay, so you said that you get, you get forty thousand and then another forty thousand?
Correct.
Up front?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that you're going to be, I don't know, I had to say graded, evaluated on this Five Star Program and the things that you've already accomplished?
Correct, yes.
And hope, okay, and hoping that those accomplishments, the, the grant will be approved to take care of that?
Yes.
Because it threw me off when you said you're getting the money upfront, but, okay, now it makes more sense.
Yeah, we, we have, they would give, it's not, like, the county doesn't have to pay for it ahead of time. We would get the money once we're, once we apply, and if we're approved, we would get the forty thousand dollars for this fiscal year and then next year.
Based upon the performance that this program has already exhibited?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding.
We're reporting out and we're doing everything that we're required to do, to report out all the numbers.
Thank you.
Yes.
One question. I, I think I know the answer to this, but it's a hundred percent grant, no matching fund, right?
Yes, correct.
Well, thank you for applying. How about that?
Something that I had, was not aware of, but in the problem statement and analysis, it mentions a high rate of suicide among youths.
Yes, for sure. Unfortunately, that, yeah, that is another, you know, something else that we're trying to combat, of course, and I think many mental health agencies within the community, too. I was just at the Systems of Care meeting earlier today and, and meeting with other local providers, and definitely one of the hot topics is working, trying to figure out how to work with youth and, and decrease the suicide risk.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have approval of the grant application to the Indiana Criminal Justice Juvenile Diversion Division Program? Reducing recidivism.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmire?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will move on to public comments. I just wanted, Mr. McManus, do you want us to offer a comment tonight?
Uh, I do. Is it time for public?
It is time for public comments. That's okay.
We got the clock somewhere?
You do pretty good. Go ahead.
I'll give you a thirty-second warning.
We'll give you a warning.
Thank you. Good evening. Mike McManus, five one nine four zero, Lilac Road. In the past week, we've had two American citizens, both of whom are immigration lawyers, mistakenly sent letters by Homeland Security telling them that they must leave the country immediately. As you probably have seen the video, about a week ago, a doctoral student from Turkey, one of our NATO allies, was swarmed upon by men dressed in black. She was kidnapped off the streets, hustled into unmarked cars. They didn't have any badges or anything, and as far as I know, she's still waiting to see whether or not, even though she's legally in the, in the country, she's going to be deported. And then, of course, most notoriously, we have Mr. Albreuil Garcia, who was legally in the United States, mistakenly put on a plane and sent to a death prison in El Salvador, despite a court having directed that he not be sent to that prison before he actually landed on the ground in El Salvador, and despite the fact that the Supreme Court most recently emphatically ruled that he needs to be returned because he was illegally and improperly deported from the United States. Unfortunately, the Trump regime has put us in an historic constitutional crisis. This is the first time in the history of the United States that any president of the United States has directly defied a Supreme Court order. Mr. Garrett, I'm not gonna go into the specifics of it, because Mr. Garrett can explain that to you, whether you want to say this was a direct violation or not, that's something altogether different, but this is a huge crisis. And the reason I bring it up is because, as you may have en- anticipated, I am still very uncomfortable with the action that two members of our county commissioners took when they issued a, sort of a reprimand against our sheriff, in which, a day after he was sued by our ethically-challenged Attorney General, Todd Rakita, you issued a statement in which you appear to have concluded, and as far as I can tell, without any evidence, that our sheriff had done something wrong. We now know that is incorrect. We now know, because of having the ability to look at the videotape of Mr. Rakita when he snuck into town this morning, or that morning, that what he said is categorically untrue. So I hope that this commission will stop.
Mr. McManus, your time's up, sir.
I thought you said you would give me a thirty-second warning. I didn't, I didn't hear you.
I did give you a thirty-second warning.
I didn't hear you.
Okay.
Please stop using fear and terror as a tactic.
Mr. McManus, your time's up, sir.
That wasn't thirty seconds, Mr. Garrett.
Well, you had three minutes and fifteen seconds, sir.
All right, Mr. Garrett, it seems like you're going to fall into the trap of your predecessors. That's a shame.
Sir, my job's to manage the time. That's all I'm doing, so I don't appreciate that.
And your president said not to worry about it, and I asked you specifically if the clock was up there.
Okay.
But I've got bigger things to worry about. We all do.
I'm here, saying not to worry about it.
We are in a constitutional crisis here, and you want to jibble over fifteen seconds? Yes, sir.
Sir, sir, Mr. Garrett said if you want to finish, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I don't have much more to say than, please support our sheriff. Please think about what's going on in this country. We have citizens that are terrified that live right here in St. Joe County. So I doubt that you spoke to the sheriff before you issued your statement. I doubt that you had any evidence. We know the, that Mr. Rakita doesn't, because his latest filing was filed last night at seven twenty-nine PM, and he had no evidence whatsoever that the sheriff had engaged in any inappropriate policies. So please, don't undermine the chief law enforcement officer of our county and our safety. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Morton, for bringing Mr. Garrett's kindness to my attention. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to offer a comment?
On the list is Carol Schumaker.
Ms. Schumaker, are you still here? You signed up to make a comment, do you wish to make a comment?
Just a short comment. I just want you to know I support this gentleman's statement.
Moving to the people online, I see Cheryl Nix has her hand up.
Good evening, Commissioners, Cheryl Nix, 17901 Sable Ridge Drive, Clay Township. I'm calling on the three commissioners to express their concern about the recently passed SB 1 in our state legislature. It was passed early this morning. It is going to be a devastating loss of revenue for our county. It will impact our schools, it will impact our libraries, it will impact our fire departments, it will impact our sheriff and deputies departments, and it's going to increase our income taxes and not really save many of us much in property taxes. It is not, it is not a well-thought-out bill. And I realize you didn't write it, I realize you didn't vote on it, but I was hoping you could use your considerable influence to reach out to Governor Braun and let him know as leaders of this county, you're worried about what he's, what's about to happen to our county. So I'm just appealing to you as our leaders and hoping that you can use, again, your considerable influence to express your concern about this bill, and perhaps he'll consider redoing it. Granted, it might get overridden, although it barely passed. So thank you very much for your time.
Ms., Ms. Nix?
Yes, Rafael.
I would, I would say to you, when you describe what you just did as our considerable, considerable influence, I don't think I would agree with that statement when it comes to these decisions being made downstate. I've had conversations with Senator Nitskowsky, several conversations just recently, trying to get updates on what's going on. So, you know, I'm glad you think we have considerable influence as far as Senate Bill 1.
Well, I appreciate your-
I see, I see your point, in theory, but-
Yes, well, I appreciate your efforts to have some input. And believe me, as a, as a voter, I feel like my impact is considerably less, but I, I'm very concerned about our county, really. South Bend School Corporation is going to be decimated by this, by this law. I mean, they're going to be hit the worst of any school corporation in the entire state. It's a disgrace. It, it's a disgrace. I just don't understand it. You know, I, I taught in the schools for 35 years. I'm proud of the South Bend schools. My children went to the South Bend schools. I, I'm just stunned by, by what the state has done. So I'm going to reach out to Governor Braun, I'm going to express, you know, my concerns, but I just would ask that you do the same. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
On that note, I just want to point out that I am on the Indiana County Commissioners Association Board of Directors. We have fought vigorously against this bill. I share your concerns greatly, and I can't refute anything you said. I'm not sure that South Bend schools necessarily is the worst hit, but you've probably looked at the numbers. We just received the numbers yesterday, or the day before, the weekend, maybe on Friday, of what the impact would be. And in general, St. Joe County is, looks like we will be dealing with a 6.7% reduction in revenue, a 7.9% reduction in revenue the following year, and a 14.5% reduction in year three. And as you correctly pointed out, we may have to take actions, we're going to have to take actions, I shouldn't say may, we're going to have to take actions to address this going into our budget season this summer.
Well, I, I appreciate you recognizing that it is, it is not great, so thank you.
Anyone else online have their hand up? I don't see anybody. I think that's it. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are recessed.
Recording stopped.